Hi, it's seven seventeen and going to call the meeting of Board of Trustees of the library to order. How exits are to the right under the exit sign and to the left under the exit sign. We are all here tonight and let's stand for the pledge of allegiance with the flag behind us. The approval of the order of agenda. Are there any public comments? No, okay, moving on. Let's let's accept the minutes of the May twenty twenty four regular meeting. Jennifer, do you want to make the motion?
I move that the board approve the minutes for the June seventeenth twenty twenty four regular meeting as drafted during the second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for doing them.
All in favor?
George, moving on to treasurer's report. No, no. I checked.
Nothing remarkable. We still seem to run from month to month. Around six or seven thousand dollars in checks done outstanding. This, I think, just seems like four percent of the point is what it is running. We began since our last meeting. We're in the process of transferring the ACH payments, which is automated clearinghouse, electronic transfer things between banks. And we are now fully moved off the tab. Report. Well, I guess it may still be in the process of moving on entirely. I think we started it in May and it's processing ACH points. And again, as I said before, there's nothing more to point out. We have our total assets, everything we collected our money from the town, always paid our taxes to the town. And the money from the cash register has been back to that account. Oh, yeah, we collected last month, we collected approximately $1,000 in excess in planned revenue. My sources, so we've essentially got a bonus to some extent.
George, you know what those other sources are?
I do not. I didn't read the deck carefully to see exactly. And then one thing is just the budget transfers that are usually common practice at this point in the year is it will line items up run over under, we have to transfer between the bands to make a balance. And this is nothing.
Okay, so can you make the motion to approve the May treasurers and then we'll go down? Okay.
So I move that we accept the May, May twenty twenty four treasures down. That should be more invited by Rocky Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Also, I'll make the motion that we accept the June twenty twenty four financial report from Rocky Smith as presented. Second. Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I guess one quick question. It says in the report, it should be noted, the library is starting to process ACH payments prior to board approval. Are they recommending that we change, make any changes to the process in order to account for that?
No, I think that, I think they wrote that up not knowing that the board had already made that motion this month and approved it.
Okay. Got it.
I think that this is, I agree with Jen's exactly. This is, it looks like it's from some question from the flyer.
Yeah, they're not recommending any.
Right.
Oh, no, we didn't vote. Okay. And the last motion.
I move that the board authorize library director to send thirty thousand dollars in the health insurance line of the twenty twenty four twenty five budget to following lines, zero net increase or decrease as and there are six items there, over thirty thousand dollars. Is anyone second to move to approve this?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask what the motion was here?
So it's to close out the fiscal years that ended June thirtieth. And some of the budget lines were overspent for a variety of reasons. And Iraqi Smith had recommended that we move money from one budget line to another so that it was all balanced out.
Got it.
All in favor? Okay, one more.
Just before you start the next one, Jen, are we adjusting to twenty or to the line item?
One twenty. Yes.
I move that the board authorize library director to transfer one hundred and twenty thousand twenty twenty four twenty five budgets to building service contracts. From the following lines, the zero net increase or decreases followed. There are four items there. Four.
Oh, no, on the new, on the new agenda. There's three, yes.
Forty four thousand, sixty four thousand and twelve thousand. Second. Any discussion?
This is for the same rationale.
Same rationale.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Great. Thank you. There's no friends here tonight. They actually take the summer off. So we will, we will see them in September. The president's report. The annual report has been submitted and accepted by New York State. The state, the purpose of the annual report is that the state collects and gathers information to help assess what libraries need all, all over the state. It's a way to track progress of libraries and it is mandatory to file. We received five thousand sixty dollars to, we have nothing to do with how much money we receive, but this is what we received. And another 10% will be received upon acceptance of the twenty twenty four report. I'm also very pleased to report that Iraqi Smith is up to date with all of its accounting. We've been, what?
No, it's good.
Yeah, it's great. And they, you know, they are, they are just such a pleasure to work with and, and they're excellent communicators. So that, that was just such a, it's a pleasure to do business with them. Amy is also working through all of these checks that George had mentioned, you know, that there's, that there are checks each month that seem to not get paid. So Amy is working her way through that. I might like to note that it's been a very hot summer and the library is, it is a cooling place and it's open to all residents and non-residents. And we are listed with the county as well as the town of Newcastle. That's great. Okay. New York State mandates two, two hours of trustee training. But as, but this board has decided that we are going, that our policy says four hours. So because we care about the community and we want to be the best trustees for our community that we can be. And I just wanted to note that I had taken two trainings this month of financial and fiduciary responsibility. Training as well as introduction to sustainability as the newest core value, both very, very interesting and especially the sustainability, especially as we begin to give thought to new spaces and some, you know, building work as we jump into the building assessment that, you know, we can talk with Jennifer Daddio about, about, you know, some of the options of sustainability that can happen.
Those are online.
Yes, they all are. Of course.
Because I follow that, you know, we both know library handbook first.
Which it's from.
Oh, it is.
Yes, I'll, I'll send them all. And as soon as you, you know, listen to it, just let Amy, send Amy a note that, that you completed it. And that's all I have for the president's report this month. So moving on, we're going to go to committee reports. Oh, and the library director, did I do that to you last month too? Okay. I'm sorry.
No, that's, it's okay. So things, things continue to go really well. Robin Friedman is our new assistant director and she has jumped in with both feet. And she's been a huge help to me already. And I'm really looking forward to working with her. She's currently exploring different DEI initiatives that we can do so we can have some training here. We spoke about one today that I was very impressed with and we're going to keep talking about it and maybe look at that for some time later this year or early next year.
Can you share?
Sure. I, I don't have my, oh, yes, I do have my notes. So Robin had been in touch with a few different organizations and it was Odllos, right? That you had spoken with and they have a very, it seems to be, they're, they work with ALA and they seem to be, have a very comprehensive training program around DEI. And I think Robin might have had more than one conversation with them, telling them a little bit about us and what our needs are. And they made some recommendations. So it sounds like what we're going to be doing, at least as right now, is like a three or four hour half day training for the entire staff. And the three items that we would be focusing on would be a cultural literacy competency, an implicit bias training and a power and privilege training. Robin is involved also with our DEI committee and works very hard on all of things surrounded or related to this area. So I'm very grateful for her work on this. They're willing to host up to sixty people, which is really great. And one of the things I said to Robin was that, you know, I want to make sure that if whatever the training is, it pertains to us as library workers because we're kind of a special breed. And I also want to make it as open and as comfortable a scenario as possible because some of these conversations are uncomfortable and we're all not on, you know, we're all in our, we're all on our journeys individually, right? So you might be farther ahead than I am, you know, I might be farther ahead than somebody else is. So I just want to make sure that it is conducive to learning and in the most positive way. And I think, I think Robin agrees with all, I know Robin agrees with all that. And she seemed very comfortable with the fact that they would be able to provide that type of training. So if it's good enough for Robin, it's good enough for me. So there'll be more on that to come. So it might force us to close for half a day so we can do the training because to break it up, we would definitely lose momentum and then some people wouldn't be able to come to some and so, but when we get closer to that.
Fantastic.
What's the anticipated cost around this?
So the, there's two options. Both are in-person training. So one would be twenty seven hundred dollars and the other one, which is like an added bonus would be thirty six hundred, but what they would do is plan, help us plan moving forward after this training is done. So fortunately, we have a very nice professional development line built into our budget, which allows people to go to ALA, to go to Nyla, to go to different conferences. Also trustees, it pays for trustees to attend those trainings as well. So that would eat a good chunk of it, but it's a really important thing that we, we all feel like we need to, we can do a little better at. So we'll see, we'll see as we keep talking. So, and there were certainly other options that were way more expensive. So that was really nice that this was not, I'm sorry.
It would be a difficult balancing act to make both work together, but if you could schedule the penthouse electrical panel at the same time, we might be able to avoid their overtime cost.
Maybe.
You have to close the library for a half day anyway.
Right.
Just an idea.
Let me, let me speak to Bill about that. That's a great idea.
And then do it on Thursday where we already have.
Exactly.
Right.
Right.
You already notice a lot of exposes for an hour Thursday.
And we would give plenty of notice. It wouldn't be like, oh, by the way, we're closed until noon today. You know, we would, we would give plenty of notice. Aside from that, a couple of things I just want to note, we, Amy Caprellian and I spoke with Anna from Levered First. And she let us know that our, some of our insurance premiums might be going up about 10%. She is currently exploring some options for us to see if it's better to stay put and eat that cost or if we have other options where it might be a little more cost effective. There was also a technology meeting for WLS. I have not had a chance to review that meeting yet. I hope to do it tomorrow, but those fees are also going up. So that's just something we're going to have to keep in mind moving forward that everything's going up right now.
They're not raising the fees because we put a claim policy. No.
No, no, we didn't, we actually didn't. Yeah, we actually didn't have to file any claims.
Because that's an insurance thing that they do.
Insurance prices are going up.
You know, WLS is raising their prices, fees because you guys can't get your emails sorted out.
Well, that's gone up every year, we think.
I'm getting better.
Okay, good. Good, good.
And lastly, I would also like to compliment Iraqi Smith, our accountants, particularly Kyle, who is so easy to work with. It breaks things down in the simplest form so that anybody can understand. And I feel like I have learned so much from him. So I'm just, I'm very grateful for their good work. They've been an absolute pleasure to work with. So it's great.
Fantastic.
And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Committee reports, do you have anything for finance committee? Okay, great. Moving on to building and grounds.
So we had a building and grounds meeting. And these bullets just touch on a few of the things. The painting that was agreed has, has been completed, looks fantastic. Including one of our public newest public study rooms. Jen confirmed that the Luthrop Associates Architectural and Engineering Building Assessment will be scheduled or will be scheduled for September. However, the children's area, Project Wonder kickoff meeting was held. I know you've been going back and forth with Strata Jones Security, but I think we've agreed that beyond things previously discussed in these meetings, there's no additional actions being done right now. Let's see, and Jennifer and her team decided to avoid a 100% increase in the customer management contract by avoiding the addition of the interior services because no problems have been noted of any size. And in addition to the first water cooler bottle filler installation, we're investigating a second one, which Pam kindly was able to negotiate a donation from a community member. And Jennifer's working with our facilities consultant to obtain an estimate for parts and installation. Finally, our facilities consultant will be working with our grounds maintenance vendor to now that sort of the busy season of the summer is over to dredge the, we dredge the northern part of the creek and we're going to dredge the south and eastern part of the creek. And possibly the water feature, which is filling up again with dirt and plant life.
It's like nature.
Peaked out.
Yes, I have, I was.
It's got islands.
It's, yeah. It does. I was sitting out there.
Okay. Couple motions. I move that the board authorize the library director to proceed with the proposal from Tricat Electric for fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. Well down on note from earlier estimates from a default of potentially thirty five thousand. To replace the fifty plus year old electric panel in the so-called penthouse equipment room. Following two RFP processes led by our facilities consultant, wherein the majority of the selected forbidders declined due to overwork on availability on the part of electricians or failed to respond. In the first round, only Tricat responded and they stuck with us through the second round where they represented the best proposal by far. And as noted earlier, this pricing includes a charge of one thousand two hundred eighty dollars. Overtime premium if we choose to have them work after hours. Second. Brian? Any discussion? We've been talking about this forever, it feels like.
Sounds like they're the only ones out there, so.
It's great that it came down so much and it's great that it's going to get done.
Yeah.
All in favor? And then a minor note here, the facilities consultant, because it is difficult to obtain an electrician these days. Because we're bringing him on for the major jobs, he's going to investigate some minor jobs at Jennifer's request, including an alarm in newly automatic door bathroom in our gallery block. And potentially to move that pesky parking lot light, light that is largely in the stream bed.
Great.
Second motion, I move that the board authorize the library director to proceed with the weekend and janitor time off infill cleaning proposal from CC Clean for an expected annual cost of thirty five thousand three hundred fifty dollars, which includes the following. Twenty three thousand four hundred for weekly deep cleaning, which I believe includes the weekends. Eleven hundred dollars for on-demand carpet cleaning, which was included on a one-time basis in our annual estimate, seven hundred and fifty dollars for resilient floor, presumably tile cleaning. Forty one hundred dollars for a one-time window cleaning and two hundred dollar per day per gium for infill during our custodians vacation and sick days estimated at thirty days. This would be a change from our current vendor, Arco, following an RFP led by our facilities consultant with our library director in which three companies responded, including our incumbent. And two to go into bits. CC's terms were superior in pricing and breadth and the references were excellent, including, I believe, Optum. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
How does the thirty five thousand compare to what we're paying Arco now?
Good question.
Good question. I don't have that number right.
Okay, I'm just wondering if it's in the same ballpark or is it a?
I think it was probably in the same ballpark.
It's not going to be a meaningful increase to the budget.
It's, no, it was.
Arco was actually higher.
Arco was higher. So they, they were lower and now they came up to higher. So they were nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty and now they would be twenty eight thousand eight hundred. So they went up.
Okay.
And the windows, and I will say that Bill, the facilities manager, also said that the number for the, the window cleaning was spot on, that it was, it was, all the other people were under. And, and this is what it costs. So it's going to get done, huh?
But it's already, it's already in the budget.
Yes, it's already in the budget. Yep.
But the window claim was an addition.
Okay.
I do think it's.
It's good, it's going to get done.
First thing.
Yeah, first thing, exactly.
I don't think it's a, you know.
We'll let you sign your name.
I love that. All right, we ready for a vote?
All in favor?
Fantastic. Personnel committee?
I had two conversations with Jennifer Daddio about the issues around the custodial. I don't know if these were talked about in the last meeting. But my understanding is that we now have a solution or a plan going forward regarding additional custodial for the theater space.
Correct. It's also more for the tech. If I, I can just jump in. It's, it's the, it's there's like actually two issues on the table. One was the tech staff that comes in on the weekend and that's been resolved by Jennifer. And that we have people on site here, employees on site who are able to help out, as evidenced by Robin dashing through with a new computer for our meeting tonight. We were delayed because we could not get the video on. So everybody's pulling their weight.
And these changes don't have any impact on the budget?
No, none. No.
So I have nothing other to add than we've solved the problem and no motions are necessary.
Thanks. Thanks so much, John.
I may be thick here. So we are not pursuing the second custodial.
Not personnel at this time, but I do think that that is a conversation that we have to seriously consider.
Okay.
Planning, future planning.
I actually asked one other thing. I saw in your report about the I guess the standing personnel family on the weekend, filling in the weekends, we need them if it's a problem and not showing up, not responding to their emails. Do you have a sufficient pool of people that you can draw on?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. So we, what we did was in a staff meeting, I just asked for people who are interested in they're part-time, they'll get extra hours. If they're full-time, they would be entitled to comp time. And we had several people step up. So we're very lucky in that the staff is very hardworking and very dedicated to this library.
So that's our short-term solution, but in the longer term, we may need to rethink the larger custodial requirements.
For other.
Yes, yes, yes.
Not for two.
And moving down to policy and bylaw committee. Anything to report? Great. Okay, communications, Brian?
Nothing to report.
Wonderful. I will say that Tao did put up all of the board meetings. I think through the year twenty eighty. Okay. Okay.
Tao is amazing.
Tao is amazing and she keeps us on track with the website. Okay, so our next meeting, we are scheduled for August nineteenth. There will be an executive meeting before.
Okay.
Okay, all noted, an executive meeting before. Well, I'm going to call it at six o'clock. So I'm going to call it at six. Same day. Yes, I'm going to call it at six. Yep. Okay. And then the meeting after that is September sixteen.
Don't want to draft an agenda for you and Jen to weigh in on.
Sure. Thank you. Okay, so would you, I move that the, that this meeting be adjourned at seven forty Okay, so would you, um, I move that the, that this meeting be adjourned at seven forty-seven. So I have a second? Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, vote. Great. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.